Go ahead and call the February Board meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Legions, please.
Pledge of Legions. On the United States of America, a country we love and for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that all board members are present. Item 2.2, are there any conflicts of interest to report at this time? Hearing none, move to item 2.3 to seek a review and approval of the agenda for this evening, please.
So moved.
We have a motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Molton. Any questions, comments on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion's approved. We'll move to item 2.4 and seek a motion to approve the minutes from the January 13th Board meeting, please.
I move we approve the minutes of the January 14th meeting.
We've got a motion by Molton.
Second.
And a second by Iverson. Any questions, comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion's approved. Turn it over to Heidi with the receiving of financial reports for January 2025.
Thank you. In the general fund, we've received January property taxes, state aid, and federal revenue in the amount of $275,176 to accommodate title federal allocations. This fund's ending cash position of $6.4 million is below the previous year and is anticipated with a budgeted use of cash on hand within this fund. Capital Outlay received $5 million for the sale of the Capital Outlay certificate funding in support of the athletic complex project, and $150,000 from a portion of the contribution from First Premier in support of the video board. Expenditures included $614,000 related to construction costs and $375,000 in debt service payments related to the high school and middle school. Special education revenue included taxes, state aid, and federal revenue in the amount of $456,000 to accommodate IDEA federal allocations. This fund's ending cash position of $3 million is well above that of the previous year. In the K-12 nutrition fund, expenditures were exceeded by the revenue for the month as students work through established lunch accounts. The ending cash position of $137,000 in this fund is below the previous year. As we begin work on the FY '26 budget, we will evaluate current and anticipated costs to determine rates for the new school year. LATC's revenue was significant at $8 million, including $2.6 million in tuition support for the second semester, as well as $2.9 million in third quarter state aid. The cash balance in this fund is reported at just over $11 million at month-end. LATC enterprise funds of EduCare, bookstore, and food service remained at healthy levels to support their operations. EduCare reported moderate revenue for the month with the transition of billing at month-end versus bi-weekly into the new year. Expenditures were moderate for the month and included a payment of $38,450 relating to services for expansion of the daycare. The premiums were exceeded by the claims and administrative costs during the month in the employee benefit trust. We will be evaluating rates for the upcoming negotiation discussions in order to determine a level of premium cost to support the operation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Heidi?
Lake Area Food Service, would you say we're doing better this year than last?
It's pretty similar when you're looking at the ratio to what we have there for the meals.
Thanks.
Thank you, Heidi. All right, turn it over to Dr. Anderson with the student staff recognition, please.
All right, here we go. We've got some boys soccer for you tonight. So when we recognize you, we'll have you come up. One of our board members will have a certificate for you, and then we're gonna have you look into that camera so we can get you on online and then also stay up for a photo op, so if people want that. So, in boys soccer this fall, Allstate first team Riley Fisher. Allstate second team Devon Snyder. And Allstate honorable mention Braxton Endries. Give a peek there and then, anybody wants a photo? Thank you. Academic Allstate for boys soccer Skylar Stanton. Riley Fisher. Braxton Endries. Chase Stimson. Noah Carlson. Devon Snyder. Griffin Keever. Jacob Sadler. And Connor Schlock. That's your academic Allstate. Wait up here, guys, for, we'll get you all in one picture here, too.
Did he miss it?
Where's my thing at? I'm Chase. Chase Stimson.
There you are, graduating.
Shake your hand.
And we had one academic Allstate from girls soccer Shelby Spildee. I would also like to recognize, so at our early dismissal in January, we recognized our staff members of the year certified and classified, and so the following people were nominated for classified staff member of the year. From the Watertown Intermediate School Jessica Miles. From Jefferson Elementary Patty Zemlikah. Lincoln All-American. Lincoln Elementary Margot Spearing. From Transportation Pam Hawkes. From the Watertown Middle School Lexi Goodmanson. From McKinley Early Childhood Center Lily Breski. From Mallett Elementary Julie Chenstedt. And from Watertown High School Austin Thompson. And your winner this year of the classified staff member of the year from Transportation Pam Hawkes. Congratulations to all those nominees and to Pam. And now for our certified staff member of the year nominees. From the Watertown Intermediate School Amanda Spaniel. From Jefferson Elementary Dr. Carrie Tisher. From Lincoln Elementary Brenda Ingles. From the Watertown Middle School Jaylen Fininger. From McKinley Early Childhood Center Holly Grimsrud. From Mallett Elementary Sierra Vanderzee. And from Watertown High School Jan Johnson. And this year's Watertown Certified Staff Member of the Year is Brenda Ingles from Lincoln Elementary. And again, congratulations to all those nominees and to Mrs. Ingles. Next up, this week is School Board Recognition Week, South Dakota School Board Recognition Week, and in recognition of dedicated leadership in public education and for improving achievement for all public school students, the Associated School Boards of South Dakota honors the Watertown School District and Board Members John Iverson, Jean Molton, Stuart Stein, Carrie Lorre, and Rochelle Rossman. And we have some special guests tonight to help congratulate you. So let's give a hand to our school board. All right, let's see. Who has Mr. Stein? All right, come on up. Introduce yourself and...
I did not have a letter printed out. Going off the computer here.
You can, I want you to have a seat. That way you're by the microphone so we can...
There.
You bet.
Will do. All right.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes. I have my introduction and the letter, so... All right, all right. Judges ready? Dearest Stuart Stein, my name is David Lechner. I am, though not at the very moment, a straight A student. I am also the vice president of the Drama Club and a member of Oral and Terp Band and Choir. After hearing a list like this, it becomes clear that I somewhat dabble in the fine arts. With that being said, I would like to let you know that without your or the rest of the school board's support, I would not be able to partake in what has made my high school experience so special. Your support was not just spoken vocally, but shown through the improvements made to the school. That includes renovations made to the band and choir rooms. The band room is now flat rather than elevated, which allows us to transport large percussion instruments easier. Trust me, that is much appreciated. The choir room now has better acoustics and has closer practice rooms for solo and Allstate choir work, and the auditorium has also gone through some changes. There's a new floor and stage and better air conditioning. Now, to those without experience, that might not seem like much, but one will find their outlook greatly changing once they find themselves moving heavy set pieces under hot stage lights. But it is your actions and the actions of the school board that decide the quality of the fine arts experience. Personally, I have made many friends through the fine arts, and I learned so many things about both the arts and myself. If I did not have these experiences, high school would have just been another chore, but because I was able to express myself and entertain others, I looked forward to going every day. Nothing could beat the energy of the crowd's cheers when I was performing Grease, or the feeling of fulfillment when winning a Superior with Distinction in Oral and Terp, but this letter is not about me. It's about you. My workload is nothing compared to yours. You have your presidential duties, but you don't only have your presidential duties, but you also have your own business and your own family to take care of. You have so much to do, yet you still take time out of your day to better the lives of students such as myself. Without you, I would never have been able to experience many of these things, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Why don't you, hey David, why don't you guys get up? Check out the camera there.
So you put it printed out, that's so nice.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Of course.
Thank you. Who has Mr. Iverson?
Hello, I'm Paige Marlowe. I'm a seventh grader at the Watertown Middle School, and I'm vice president of Student Council, and I'm here today to congratulate Mr. Iverson. Dear Mr. Iverson, we are here today to thank you for the time and effort you have put to the Watertown School District. You have done so much for us in the system for years, including being vice president on the board and a history teacher at the WHS, and we are so very grateful for you helping to start the DC trip that we have now done for years, and things you have done for the students throughout the district, being the effort you and the board are doing to get air conditioning in the elementary school and the football field you are continuing to build, also that you have taken time to help young students get their license through driver's ed. We can't even put into words how thankful we are for the $500,000 donation that was given to us on January 19th, 2024, at the Watertown High School basketball game doubleheader. We are not just thanking you, but we are thanking the whole board in the process of building Watertown schools to their best, including all the teachers, principals, and board members in the Watertown School District.
We gotta do the official picture.
Yes. Good job. How about Ms. Molton?
All members of the Watertown School Board, especially Ms. Molton. My name is Tyson, and I am a sixth grader from the Watertown Intermediate School. I am honored to have been selected to write this appreciation letter to you, and I hope you enjoy it. Thank you for being an active member in this school district for over 40 years. I know that you have made a lasting impact on many students through your work as a teacher, librarian, and theater director. My mom, April, was one of these students. She has told me how some of the best times with her friends were through theater. I also find it impressive that you turned the Watertown High School library into the best high school research library in South Dakota. It showed your continued dedication to the students of Watertown when you volunteered to run for school board even after retiring. I am sure being on the school board comes with hard decisions and tough conversations, but your effort in these areas helped the whole school district ensure that students like me have the education opportunities we need. Thank you again for allowing me to share my letter with you, and I hope that you continue to do good things for our school. Thank you.
That's for you, Jean, that's yours. Nope, that's your certificate. You're on the board.
I get to keep this?
It was just for the photo. Ms. Lorre?
I'm Riley Bachan. I'm a seventh grader on the cabinet from the Watertown Middle School, and I'm here to congratulate Carrie Lorre. To Carrie Lorre, we highly appreciate you and your hard work in the Watertown School District. You have been an amazing treasure to our school PTO for many years. You have provided a lot of generous gifts to our amazing staff. They appreciate you so much. We know you're very into watching wrestling, spending time watching your two awesome boys. We also appreciate you for being a part of the Watertown Basketball Association. I think it's great how much you love watching sports and supporting Arrow Sports. Some of yours and our school board's accomplishments that we would like to recognize. The new football field looks amazing, and putting air conditioning in our elementary schools will help the kids in our town so much. The amount of time you've put into our school PTO cannot be beat. Everyone here is very appreciative of everything you do for our town and our school board. Thank you for the amazing middle school, and we all appreciate the time and effort you put into the middle school. Thank you so much, Carrie, and thank you to our school board.
Gotta get in that camera. And Ms. Rossman?
Dear Rochelle Rossman, my name is Whitney Martenson. I'm a junior at Watertown High School, and I've lived in Watertown for about five years now. I'm a debater, I'm on the Student Council Board, and I'm involved in several other new school clubs like Arrow Ambassadors. I want to take today to thank you for your work towards public education. Education is a powerful tool, and I admire your effort towards providing the best possible for our community. Your support specifically of activity and strong curriculum has changed not only the environment in our schools, but also the lives of our students. In the years I've lived in Watertown, I went from a year and a half at the middle school to now three years at the high school. One of my favorite things about our school is all the clubs and opportunities presented to youth. From our sports to our academics, Watertown has grown so much in inclusivity and opportunity. The opportunities provided at Watertown allow our students to reach their full potential. Youth are now able to explore different career paths through classes and learn what they want their future to look like. They can get hands-on experience and the ability to learn and engage themselves in whatever interests them, as well as opportunity to earn college credit. In a growing capacity, there is something for everyone here at Watertown, and it really makes an impact. I've seen many kids grow into amazing young adults fostered by unending care from our staff, students, and school board. We can never forget the importance of our youth to our community, and we should never underestimate them. Thank you for your continued support, Rochelle.
Well, thank you so much to our students. Let's give the students another big round of applause. And a big, big thank you to our school board members for their service to both the district and to all of us in the Watertown School District. And to help us celebrate School Board Appreciation Week, I have two young men here I kind of refer to in my head as the barbecue boys, even though that sounds better than sloppy joe boys, sorry. So if I could have, these are fourth graders at Jefferson Elementary in Mrs. Hoag's class, Carter Larson and Barrett Bainen, come on up, and we have our food service director, Caitlin Bach, who provided us with some barbecue tonight. But guys, you want to read your, these two young men felt so strongly about sloppy joes remaining on the menu at Jefferson that they had a petition to help us get sloppy joes back on, correct? All right, so do you guys feel okay reading your petition?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for letting us come and do all our stuff. We really appreciate it, because like, not many students usually come here. So, let's get on with the letter. Hello, Mrs. Bach. Me and my friend were trying, are trying to persuade you into making sloppy joes. My name is Carter, and my friend's name is Barrett. And here are some reasons why you should make some. One, they are super tasty, and when you make them, just everybody loves them. We haven't had them in like two years or something, so that's another reason. And we want them to stay strong, so. Everybody wants some, and we literally have the back of the paper that's signed by like so many students, like right here. So, thank you, Mrs. Bach, for making, well, serving the whole district sloppy joes tonight and bringing some sloppy joes. We really appreciate, appreciate it. Thank you.
And I believe your class got some.
Yes, we did a taste test.
And did they, am I correct, are they possibly gonna, the Lake area, all right.
Yep.
The Lake area food service is gonna treat these guys to some sloppy joes, too, so thanks for that. So, good work, gentlemen.
Thanks for all you did.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Decker, for getting that lined up. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, we will transition to, if there's anyone here from the public to speak on agenda or non-agenda items for Lake Area Tech. Okay, we'll invite President Sanderson up to hear an enrollment update, please.
Good evening. I have good news, but it pales in comparison to all of that. How great. Tis the season for an update on enrollment at Lake Area Tech, and with every turn of the semester, that just gives us an opportunity to gauge how things are going, where they're going well, and where we might have to make some changes. As you know, one of our main goals at Lake Area Tech is increasing the number of graduates each year that come out of Lake Area, and that happens through a variety of factors. None of them are easy wins, but all are important wins. Enrollment is a factor, student retention is a factor, and the idea of students having a great experience on campus. And so, that might happen through activities or things like food service in the bookstore, and certainly their experience in the classroom. Very, very happy to report that we have added on to the new records that Lake Area has set this fall. We hit record enrollment at just over 2,300 students, and as the spring semester turned, we hit 2,707 students. So the first time Lake Area Tech has ever gone over the threshold of 2,700 students. So, really see that as a big win as we're continuing to push forward on the number of graduates that we support every year. Of those students, 395 are new students coming into this spring semester. Dual credit continues to be a big area of growth, and certainly love having juniors and seniors in high school experience the college coursework and the challenges that that brings. We also had growth in our nursing program, in dental, in cosmetology, and many students taking general ed classes so that they can start in their technical programs this coming fall. So, while all of that is terrific, and I love that that many students have those great experiences, none of that would be possible without great faculty and staff. And so, just want to take this time in a public setting to thank everybody on the Lake Area Tech rolls for the work that they do every day to support our students. Overall, that puts us about 5% up from where we were this time last year, and I think we continue to see students finding value in a one or a two-year program that allows them to jump into a career of their choice. In terms of value, the average program at Lake Area Tech right now runs about $28,000. That's for a two-year program. Our students graduating from two-year programs average about $12,000 in debt. So you hear stories about student debt being out of control and difficult to pay back. Our average student, when you didn't even factor in scholarships, was able to earn back the cost of their credential in five months from the class of 2023. So all of those are factors for us to understand, are we getting the formula right in terms of a really affordable option that has high value on the backend? And I think students finding their way to Lake Area Tech and the levels that they have is an indication that that's coming together. Spring is broadly thought of as a new season in life, and certainly right now is a time where we're encouraging folks to see the opportunities in higher education for them and turn those into reality. If anybody's looking at re-careering or entering post-secondary for the first time, now's the time to get an application in to the college to start for next fall. And right now, Bill Dakota Scholarship applications are open at Lake Area Tech. At Lake Area Tech, there are 27 different program options where students can pursue a two-year or a one-year degree on a full-ride scholarship and have opportunity to work in the field. Right now in South Dakota, there are .4 people unemployed for every job that exists. So that's to say unemployment is super low, the number of jobs that required skilled credentials are very high right now. So opportunities like through Lake Area Tech just open doors for folks in many, many different areas, and invite anybody interested to join us as you look ahead to fall of 2025. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions you might have about our spring enrollment report and where we're headed.
Just a couple of questions. You mentioned 2,700. Of that 2,700, how many are dual credit? And then I assume the rest would be on campus?
Uh, correct. So I'll start, Mr. Iverson, with the number of dual enrollment students. Right now, we have 549 high school students who are taking credits with us, and those average from one class to some students being enrolled full-time with us. And then your second question, remind me again, was?
I can do the math, it'd be about 2,200.
Yep, and you had mentioned, were they all on, on campus? Some are taking online programs, some are on campus. See, overall, one of the trends that we're seeing is more students are part-time students than maybe five or 10 years ago. Some of that has to do with dual credit, and some of that has to do with folks are figuring out how to take college and, and do life blended together. And so I'm just seeing some interesting trends now compared to where we were just a few years ago.
You said there are 27 different options for Bill Dakota. What's the total number of scholarships available? Because I assume there's multiple scholarships for, for some programs.
That's right. So this year, we have 249 students on campus who are Bill Dakota students. That means that all 249 of them have full ride through their college program and have a commitment to work in South Dakota following their graduation for three years. In addition to that, employers from the surrounding states in the region and some South Dakota employers who offer positions outside of what's eligible for Bill Dakota have seen what Bill Dakota has done for that early pipeline growth and, and getting employees that have the skills that employers are looking for. And so we've opened up a whole new class of scholarships in the last few years called the Workforce Scholarships. Employers can design their own scholarship, basically. Many of those are at least half of the cost of education up to a full ride, often come with a work commitment of a couple of years like Bill Dakota, but that has allowed more employers outside of the Bill Dakota program to build their pipeline as well for their workers. So this year, as we look ahead to fall, we'll award somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 scholarships, Bill Dakota scholarships, to start in fall of 2025.
There's a new program, Surgical Tech, that starts next fall, is that correct, or does it start sooner?
Uh, in Surgical Tech, we started that in the fall of 2023, and so we'll this spring graduate the first cohort of surgical technology students. I think you're thinking of the Dental Hygiene Program. And with the Surgical Technology Program, the newly renovated space will be open for this fall as well.
Is that part of Bill Dakota?
It is.
Okay.
You answered my third question, and that was scholarships beyond. I have a friend who is from Kearney, Nebraska, and he is on a scholarship with Butler, and so he's in school for four weeks, and then he's back in Kearney.
Yeah. Yeah, that partnership is, I think, a really good example of industry being highly involved in training future employees. The diesel industry has done a tremendous job of high level of engagement, both in supporting students as they're earning their education on campus, but also giving them internship experiences where they're on the job in mentored relationships with technicians that have been around the block a time before and is able to shed that, that experience on to our students. And coming back and forth to campus just gives them a really rich experience and kind of accelerates their ability to be ready to step onto a technician floor.
Was, I assume that some of these things existed before Bill Dakota, but is Bill Dakota kind of become the model now that other industries are starting to follow? I mean, from out of state, the Nebraska people, the Minnesota people?
Uh, to some degree, and in some cases, businesses or industries are just understanding that to get the workforce at the, the level of skill that they're seeking, they have to be involved early. And so we're seeing a variety of ways that employers or entire industry is, is starting to invest in students' education and create awareness of the opportunities in their fields in middle school and in high school.
That's, that's wonderful news.
Seems to be a trend that fewer students are selecting college and selecting VOTAC as, as an alternative because they can get right into a career and start earning money.
In the class of 2024 in South Dakota, about 15% of that graduating class went on to a technical college degree program, and we know that the number of students who aren't seeking post-secondary in South Dakota right now has grown since the pandemic. And so that's an area where we really see opportunity for somebody who might look at having a one semester, two semester opportunity to get skills, get into a career that, that gives them a step up in terms of wages and opportunity for themselves and their families.
All right, we'll transition to personnel. 4.1.1, retirements.
Thank you. We don't have any retirements to share with you tonight.
4.1.2 with resignations, please.
Before you are five resignations. We would seek your approval for those as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Motion by Rossman.
Second.
Second by Lor. Questions or comments?
Aye.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resignations are approved. Item 4.1.3, the contract recommendations and addendums.
Under contract recommendations and addendums, you'll see one full-time staff recommendation, a part-time temporary for childcare, and then a variety of adjunct contracts for the spring semester. I'll stand by for any questions, but we recommend you approve as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract recommendations and addendums.
We've got a motion by Lor and a second by Rossman. Any questions, comments on the contract recommendations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll transition to property, 4.2.1, with the consideration of the change order of number one, Surgical Tech renovation.
Thank you. Before you is a change order associated with some cabinets in our new surgical technology operatory space. The increase to the contract would be $6,113, and that would bring the adjusted project up to $965,413.
Is there a motion to approve change order number one for Surge Tech?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Molton. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item 4.2.2, change order number two, the dental renovation.
This will be the last change order for the dental renovation. This was related to some casework to hold equipment in the dental area. It increases the contract by $1,061 and brings that total project to $1,234,000, excuse me, $1,234,007, and you'll see the final pay app come through bills next month at the March meeting.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of change order number two for dental renovation.
Motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions or comments on that change order?
When is that due to be completed for that program?
The dental project is fully complete now and open.
Okay, great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Excuse me. 4.2.3, authority to bid the semi-tractor.
We're seeking your authority to bid for a semi-tractor for our corporate education program and the commercial driver's license program. We would bring back the bids received to you at the March meeting.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Molton. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Transition to discussion items for 14. If there's anyone here from the public to speak on agenda or non-agenda items for item 5.1. Move to item 5.2, Northeast Tech High School Report.
Yes, we have our meeting on next Wednesday on the 19th at 5:45, and we'll also be taking part with the director's eval prior to that, so February meeting, February 19th, 5:45.
Okay. Item 5.3, we'll have an update on the employee benefit trust, please.
Thank you. The 2024 financial report of the district's self-funded health and group dental insurance saw an overall net decrease in cash balance of $464,804, ending the 2024 year with an ending available cash on hand of $3.3 million. This is equivalent to a 32.57% fund balance. Total claims increased by 19% from the previous year. The average trend for our employee benefit trust is 11.46, which is below Wellmark's experience trend of 8.6. Actual claims versus projected is 101% in the first six months of the contract. This compares to 111.47% at this time last year. Our plan had 156 claims over $10,000 and 14 over $100,000. Cost trends reported by Wellmark included that nearly 11% of the members incurred no claims in the current period, and additional 62% had claims paid of $2,500 or less. The remaining 27% of the members accounted for 93% of claims paid. The cost of prescription drugs continues to be a significant portion of the medical cost, as approximately 35% of the health claims are related to prescription drugs, which is comparable to the prior year. Wellmark continues to monitor the use of prescription drugs, and credits are provided to the district for rebates and incentives offered by the drug companies, of which just over $680,000 was received in 2024. Wellmark will continue to serve as the district's third-party administrator for the 2025 year, and Delta Dental will service the dental side. Also included within the financial report is information related to participation. 90% of the plan participants had chosen the benefit of Plan B, the $2,000 deductible, with the other 10% electing that of Plan A, the $1,000 deductible. Employees are allowed to enroll in coverage or to change between the two plans annually. Monthly, the district contributes $795 towards the cost of group health coverage per month and $40 per month towards the cost of group dental coverage for plan participants eligible for the district contribution towards the plan. There are currently 693 employees retirees elected Cobra on the plan, and the demographics of the plan include 72% female, 71% electing single, 54% are over the age of 45, and 4% are over the age of 65. I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, hearing no questions, we'll move to the first reading of policies. Dr. Iverson, do you want to take the lead on these?
Yes. The first four, BBB, School Board Elections, BBBE, Unexpired Term Vacancy, BBBE-P, and Unexpired Term Fulfillment, and BBFA, Board Member Conflict of Interest, are all part of our strategic updating of our policies. So you can see through those four the various updates and changes to that. And again, for the public, and just a reminder, we are comparing that to the, the model policies from Associated School Boards, our parents' organization. Each of them have slight changes to them just to kind of keep up to date with changing times here with that. So those four are part of that. GBG, the Employee Criminal Background Check, that is an update from legislation that has been changed, and so we needed to get this updated before we have our, our audit of our criminal background checks. So we have GBG, the Employee Criminal Background Check, and GBG-R, that is the, sorry, that is, GBG-R is the, are the regulations for that. And so that is, that is a new adopt, a new adoption in addition to the GBG that we needed to have in place for our background checks. So all of those would be first readings, would be put out for review, and we'd bring them back for you in March.
Sounds good. Transition to item 6.1, approval of the bills, if there's a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Lor.
Second.
Second by Rossman. Any questions on bills, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 6.1 is approved. We'll transition then to personnel. Mr. Barrios, 6.2.1, and retirements, please.
Yep, before you tonight, we've got five retirements listed. Thank you to these staff for their many years of service with the Watertown School District. We do recommend your approval on these retirements.
Is there a motion to approve the retirements?
I'll make a motion to approve the retirements.
We have a motion by Lor.
I will second.
And a second by Rossman. Any questions or comments?
Just another general comment of thank you to all of the retirees, and it's always, you know, testament to the district and to our wonderful staff for how many years of service they've put in, in their retirement years. So thank you.
Just reading one of the lines from the letters, "I can honestly say I'm a much better person for having taught here in Watertown." How nice. Okay, we've got our motion and our second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Retirements are approved. Move to the resignations.
Five resignations as well, and would recommend your approval of those as presented.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Rossman.
Second.
Second by Lor. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resignations have been approved and accepted. We'll move to the contract recommendations and addendums.
A list of some contract recommendations and addendums, two that are not listed up on the board here, Don Burner, Sam Kane, both for ELA curriculum as well. Put those on there, and so would recommend your approval for these as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract recommendations and addendums.
We've got a motion by Lor.
Second.
And a second by Rossman. Any questions, comments?
English Language Arts. I was just at the State Board this morning, and we're in the third reading for English Language Arts. April meeting will be our final approval, should we have any changes. It's quite a lengthy document, about 74 pages. So we had a good discussion on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item 6.2.4, Superintendent Contract.
Yes, this would be a motion for an additional year for the superintendent, so the years of '25, '26, '26, '27, with terms to be negotiated.
Is there a motion to approve as suggested and recommended?
Yes, I'll make a motion to extend the appointment of current Superintendent Dr. Jeff Danielson for a two-year contract period, '25, '26, and '26, '27, with specific terms to be determined.
We have a motion by Lor.
Second.
Second by Rossman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion's been approved. Nice. Item 6.3.1, Property, receive and approve the audit for the '23, '24 year.
You get to hear from me again tonight. The '23, '24 audit for the district has been accepted by the Legislative Audit. The board has been provided a hard copy of the report, and the PDF version is available on the district's website. An unmodified opinion or clean opinion was issued on the financial statements of the business-type activities in each major fund. An unmodified opinion concludes that the financial statements were presented fairly and in all material respects in accordance with the applicable financial reporting framework. The summary of auditor's results can be found on page 89 of the report. Some highlights of the report include that the district's net position increased by $19 million, resulting in a net position of over $130 million. In fiscal year '24, total revenue surpassed $118 million and were 10.97% higher than the previous year. Expenditures in the amount of $99 million came in at 7.89% higher than the previous fiscal year. $17.3 million in federal funds were received in fiscal year 2024. The federal awards tested as major programs were the Student Financial Aid Cluster, Child Nutrition Cluster, Manufacturing Extension Partnership, and the Career and Technical Education Grant. The Management's Discussion and Analysis Report can be found starting on page six of the audit report, which provides an internal outline of the main financial impacts of the audit report and corresponding financial reports. Page 17 of the report includes factors bearing on the district's financial future, with notation of the district's assessor. notation of the district's assessed value, enrollment projections, COVID funding relief ending in 2024, phase two of the athletic complex construction in progress with $5 million in secured capital ally certificates, as well as surgical technology renovations at LATC and the wrap-up of the Archway project. It was also noted that the district has secured Sourcewell contracts for gymnasium improvements at Mallett and is approved for a project development agreement for cooling upgrades at Mallett and McKinley Elementary. The detailed audit report is open to public inspection during normal business hours at the business office and is also available in PDF format on the district's website and on the Department of Legislative Audit website. It is requested that the school board accept the '23, '24 audit report of the district.
Thank you, Heidi. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the audit report as presented. In case anyone wants to read it, there it is.
I'll second.
Is it 74 pages or longer?
Oh, it's longer.
You read it off.
We'll start with that. Okay, we've got a motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Iverson.
I'll make a quick comment. I've sat in probably about six of these audit reports through the years, and each year I think, I don't know if it can get any better, but it continues to get better. So good job, Heidi, Emily, and your team. It was short, sweet. They're doing an awesome job, so, well done.
Yeah, for the rest of the board.
And a very special thank you to Emily. She's the runner back.
For the rest of the board, our auditors note how easy our staff is to work with and how efficient and organized everything is. So when they come in, and we always like to point out, too, that it's much better done than Sioux Falls when they do there.
I've been a part of other boards, and it just, this is, this is not, it's not a slam dunk. There's a lot of hard work that goes into it, and I can assure you that it makes our job a heck of a lot easier. So thank you very much.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is approved. Thank you. Item 6.3.2, consider surplus resolution.
This is an easy one. It is recommended to approve the surplus resolution to clearing the tech equipment item surplus for sale.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Molton. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item 6.3.3, consider stadium use agreement.
Yes, it is recommended to approve the agreement with the city of Watertown for use of the stadium for the duration of March 1, 2025, and terming on March 1 of 2028. The city would pay the actual cost of utilities and maintenance and repairs. The stadium structure will be rented out on an as-is condition for the purpose of hosting the Watertown Baseball Association.
And our hope would, our hope would be, upon approval of us tonight, this would go to the next city council meeting for their, for their approval, so it would take effect March 1, and it does have a three-year lifespan, so denotes what the stadium would be used for, for the next three years, anyway.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the stadium use agreement as presented and explained.
We've got a motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item 6.3.4, consider the property purchase agreement with Roosevelt.
Yes, it is recommended to approve the purchase agreement with the Watertown Catholic School Corporation in the amount of an $875,000 cash offer with a noted closing date on or before March 27 of 2025.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We've got a motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Molton. Questions, comments?
I'll make a couple, just so that it has been kind of a lengthy conversation, I would say, back and forth between some of the board members and just in committee and things. And definitely, I would say, one of the first things I noted when we did vote in favor of listing, was that just last month or two months ago? I can't remember, for sale, knowing that it may come with an offer from a private school. We know there's a need for that in the community. We've heard that from other people. So some people, I think, may look and say, well, it's silly if they would send it or sell it to a private school. And then others may say, well, that's just unkind if you're not going to be willing to sell it to a private school. And I think we just have to put all of that aside, and for us, the decision is what's the best for the Watertown School District. And I, I thought a lot about this, just didn't take the decision lightly at all. But a few things, I guess, I considered, and I'm not sure how others are feeling up here, but we have the building, it's for sale, and if IC would purchase it, it's going to continue to be a school. It would have that minimal impact, we would like to assume, on the neighborhood over there. You know, keep that vibrancy, keep it, keep it busy with kids and, and, in a positive way over there. I guess accepting the offer also would mean we don't have to pay to maintain the building anymore, so that's a positive for us. And we wouldn't have to sit and watch that building sit empty. And I use the example of Grant. I watched that building sit empty for a long time and just kind of become an eyesore. So I guess I see it as a positive, moving it on to someone else to keep the, the property in use. And also just looking at it from the fiscal perspective, that if we sell it, we're able to put that cash or that profit into other district priorities, which is a positive, especially knowing how tight budgets are right now and will likely continue to be. I've probably rambled enough, but I guess, just my opinion, two cents on, I will be, you know, voting in favor of accepting the offer. I do think that it's in the best district of the, or best interest of the Watertown School District, but it's also a show of good faith that we're being partners in education as well, so.
Rochelle, you nailed those comments. That was awesome.
I was going to say much the same, but you already lead me to it, so.
Yeah, I'll just, real brief. Faith is a big part of my life, but I'm also very competitive. So it's, it's like, you know, on one hand, I, I want to see this continue on, but on the other hand, what does that do from a competition standpoint, wearing my school board hat? It, it's not an easy decision, when you think about it, short and long term, because there's financial ramifications, there's, for financial ramifications, both short and long term. But ultimately, we'll be supporting it, and thank you for the good discussion amongst the board, because we do feel like this is the right move at this moment in time for the district, so thank you.
I think it'll be really nice to see kids in that building again and on that playground and for the neighborhood.
And from a taxpayer perspective, financially, we did have an appraisal done, and this sale is above that of what it was appraised for. So that is a positive as well for the district.
And I think it's a reminder, too, just that we wouldn't have put it up for sale if we had any plans to use it. And I think that's a good reminder to the community, there's no current plans for the district. So rather than let it sit there, it makes sense.
Okay, we've got our motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Round of applause. Stick around for the rest of these, will you?
Wait till you see these second readings.
All right, this is where it really gets fun. Second reading of policies. Dr. Danielson?
Yes, so on, when you consider all four of them, there were no updates from last month's first reading, so these are recommended for your approval. So BA, school board goals and objectives.
Heidi, is there a way to group them all?
Um, let's do them separately.
Oh, okay. All right, 6.4.
Because we're having so much fun.
Yes. 6.4.1, is there a motion to approve the school board goals and objectives?
I move we approve the school board goals and objectives.
Second.
Motion by Molton, second by Iverson. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. 6.4.2, the BAB, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Molton. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. 6.4.3, BB, legal status.
I move we approve school board legal status.
Motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. 6.4.4, the school board powers and duties.
I move approval to, or motion to approve the BBA, school board powers and duties.
We've got a motion by Lor.
Second.
Second by Rossman. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item 6.5.1, open enrollment.
Yes, we do not have any open enrollment or 13, 20 attends for you this month.
Okay, we'll keep it with you with the communications and administrative reports.
Yes, few reminders. We do have parent, so there's no school on Friday, February 14th. We have our second parent-teacher conferences of the year at all buildings from 8 to 4, and then no school for President's Day on Monday, February 17th. In between those two days, just for legislative fans, there is a Cracker Barrel at 8 o'clock AM on Saturday, the 15th, out at the county extension of the fairgrounds. And so if you're interested in that, and then just, once again, I want to congratulate Brenda Ingles on her Certified Staff Member of the Year and Pam Hawkes on her Classified Staff Member of the Year. And then a couple of legislative updates. Today in the House, the Post and Teach the Ten Commandments bill was defeated in the House, if you were following that one. The bill on the policy for school chaplains did fail. There's still some outgoing ones that we're watching on dual credit, school bond elections. There's not a lot that schools are supporting right now for legislation. Most of the bills are opposed. So like the dual credit one that I'm talking about is to increase the amount families would pay for dual credit. That was part of Governor Noem's budget, was to increase that amount. There's a bill on requiring counselors to contact parents before they have conversation. That hearing's on February 10. Yeah, there's, there's, there was an odd bill to defund the Huron School District that was later then withdrawn by the sponsor, so it's been quite a session out there so far this year, so. And my all estimates right now, the fourth quarter sales tax revenue has been flat or even maybe lower than estimated, so that 1.25% might be what we end up with, but, you know, it's not done till it's done, so.
All right, thank you very much. Item 7.2, board report to superintendent.